Father, please be with us tonight and guide our work here. In thanksgiving to you, we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay.
Greetings.
Greetings.
To the flag, under God, individual for liberty and justice for.
And the text. Let's all keep our, keep our, say, grant our favor to the North Houston, the folks up there and your prayers for, for the tragedy that occurred this weekend with the concert up there. Okay, roll call of council members, let the record reflect that all members are present. Do we have any public comments? I know, seen. Looks like we don't, so. Moving on to item number six. Uh, approval of consent agenda, approval. October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and your approved resolution twenty-one R sixty amending FY twenty-one twenty-two budget previously approved for FY twenty twenty-one. Any discussion or motions?
Uh, question, why do we have to reapprove that?
Because the money was, is actually being spent in this new this year instead of the last this year. We approved the contracts previous this year, so we did the budget amendment then.
We didn't know when the work would be completed.
And it's not till then.
And now, um, I talked to the auditors. That it be moved to our twenty-one twenty-two budget here because that's the only money.
It's the same amount, not fifty-two.
It made some difference on our.
We're not doing that, we're just waiting on the end. I make a motion to.
Okay, I have a motion made by council member Matt Yarborough, seconded by council member Mark Brown. Uh, council member Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Melissa Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am? Council member Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Rory Escolante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let's reflect that. All right, items seven. Discussion and action items. Discussion regarding possible drainage product, projects presented by Strand and Associates.
Well, that's council, I brought the drainage project with full counsel. And looking at the initial design, Strand handed over, I had some concerns. And based on those concerns, Strand produced an alternate design, which I think there was some concern about. So essentially what we did is we just flopped concrete, smoked the painting, put it opposite side of the ditch, but. Wanted to let council know of that because it could present a situation where, um, some residents were thinking they were going to sell them at others' mark. Probably we might've got a little bit lost on that. Brought Jared EMO P from Strand to kind of walk y'all through it. What we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing, and answering the questions about the project. Brought the last, um, uh, art illustration I had from last, last meeting. Uh, so the section that runs adjacent to the school. Because of the width of the ditch and the constraints between the existing fences and the existing power poles. One side of the ditch slope needs to be concrete lined. That way it can be a two-to-one slope, a steeper slope. Two-to-one slope is not generally not normal. And the other side is a two-to-one, so initially, which is a more, 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 more slope. Initially, the three-to-one slope and the flatter slope was on the side of the fence, on the north side of the ditch. Uh, and the concrete lining was on the school side, uh, adjacent to the power poles. And that was, that, that was about fifty percent of design. Discussing that with the city, uh, the expressed that would be, for a maintenance standpoint, it would be better if the concrete line slope was on the north side. And then the school and city would more easily be able to maintain the, the flatter slope on the south side of the ditch. So that's, that was the, that was the change. Do you want to have any questions or other comments?
Any discussion?
Cliff, was there a cost change to that?
Yes, there was. Uh, that wasn't the cost change. I meant for, I'm sorry, for the whole, the, um, the cost opinions over. The switching it from one side to the other and moving back to the cost. If the residential standpoint doesn't.
Moving it further to the east, right?
Yeah, if we were to, if we were to do the. So that's where the additional conversation will come in. The, the section that will have concrete lining is between, right in front of the school, um, from the west leading up to Audubon Woods Drive. Crossing over Audubon Woods, there's enough space there to, to grade both the slopes so that maybe either one wouldn't need to be concrete lined. But from a maiden standpoint, um, Cliff and the city thought it might be nice to have concrete lining on the north side. To replicate this on the west side of Audubon Woods Drive. And that's, currently it's included in the contract, the construction contract is an alternate. So it's something that the contract will bid on, um, but it doesn't have to be accepted. I think the, the concern is that the, the individuals on the east side of Audubon Woods Drive are not necessarily getting that slope. The concrete line slope where the ones on the west side are.
So maybe, so you, you're talking about regrading the east side because there's enough room over there to regrade it.
Correct.
But you're saying that there isn't enough room on the west side to regrade it.
Correct, and it's, it's primarily due to the. Located.
But that's on the school side, right?
Will stop as soon as you get to Audubon Woods Drive. They don't contain it in the east.
Right, I hear you, uh, but I guess the concern was on the non-hole side is the two-to-one slope, right?
Yes, the concrete line.
And the three-to-one is workable.
Three-to-one can be workable, yes.
Okay. Why don't we regrade the two-to-one on that side over there and save some money?
Yeah, that, that's the way, that's the way the, the plans are currently set up, was an alternate of possibly concrete lining the east side as well.
Yeah, I, I'm just, maybe I'm missing something, but you're saying the west side, right? And the side that's near the school has power poles and that's at a three-to-one, right?
Three-to-one, yes.
Correct. And the other side. Reline that one.
Correct.
But you're saying on the east side of the ditch, it's also two-to-one, but there's enough room to regrade it.
It can be graded to three-to-one, three-to-one, yes.
So why can't we regrade the two-to-one on the other side?
There's not enough space between the existing fence and power. With the east side or the west side?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is it's the same distance from the ditch to the, to the property lines, right?
Right, so on, on the west side of Audubon Woods Drive, between the fences and the existing power poles, there's not enough room.
And the power poles are on opposite side of the fences.
Right, the ditch is getting much wider, um, to meet the last of the range district requirements and the slopes on the side, and it's, it's getting a little bit deeper, so. For that section to fit through, uh, on the west side of Audubon Woods Drive, one of the slopes has to be concrete lined. The north side or the south side have to be.
And the power poles are on the south side or the north side?
Power poles on the south side, there's, there's three in the yellow area there, and then a, one additional one just, uh, on the west, the east side of Audubon Woods Drive.
I mean, the property setback lines from the distance to the ditch should be the same on the east and the west, right?
They are, the city's in the process of retaining the east end from the school, and then you have the park on the east side there.
Yeah, I just don't understand how you have room on the east side to regrade on the pit side, but you don't have room on the.
There, there are no power poles on the east side, that's, that's.
We don't have to regrade the side with the power poles because it's already.
I'm saying we're grading from the power poles to the fence.
Okay.
The whole length, the whole width.
The whole.
The whole width is being utilized. And the only thing that fits in there is a three-to-one slope, in that yellow section, one of those slopes have to be concrete lined with a two-to-one slope, a steep slope. In order to make that fit. The alternative would be to have the utility poles be located, uh, which are costly.
I got you.
Sorry if I didn't explain that.
No, no, I got you, so no power poles, the distance has to be enough, if we have power poles on the east side, that's the reason why we have that.
Right, we have ample space on the east side there, uh, because of the power plant.
Got it, because you're grading the whole width of the ditch, not, not just one side. Got you, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further questions? Okay, do we have a? Not a, not a motion, that's right, it's just.
Discussion.
Yeah, just a discussion. I bet. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Discussing, consider approving Matula and Matula change order number three, and now not to exceed eight thousand six hundred forty-one dollars fifty-four cents.
So, um, council, this is, uh, this is here basically by, by request of Matula and Matula. The construction on Moore has got to point an intersection of, uh, West Shreve Drive and Moore. Do it, and to get the best product possible, we're going to have to shut down the intersection altogether. With the way it was spec'd out, um, the use of line to treat the subgrade. That's going to extend that time, it's probably anywhere from two to two and a half weeks, we're going to lose use of that intersection. That's fairly significant for this intersection, um, it's one of the only ones, uh, that traverses the west and north and south pretty much of all of this, the southern part of Richwood. So they approached the city of Richwood and asked if they could, um, use alternate materials, uh, which would be a crushed limestone. Those alternate materials were, took the TerraCon GeoTech to look into, and, um. There's no problem, and, and what we'll do is we'll, we'll cut the time. That's essentially what this is, the time saving.
There's no change in quality of finished product?
No, what they'll, what they'll end up doing is overexcavating and putting in more, uh, more replacement materials.
So I agree with that.
I did, I did tell them I would ask you guys, um, I'm behind this, if it were up to me, I would pay if this, this street's a, a lack of ready construction on. If I can save a week and a half, I know eight thousand dollars, a lot, a lot of money for a week and a half, but it's a, it's a pretty significant intersection. And so everyone getting in and out there, the better.
Who provided the original construction specs?
That's Strand's.
And what's Strand's opinion?
Uh, well, they're just, they're going off based off of my request.
I just see that you presented this to TerraCon, I'm not, I guess familiar, who's TerraCon?
TerraCon is GeoTech, and here from they work with.
Okay.
Material.
Yeah, I, I just, they provided the original specs, so I would assume that they didn't say whether or not that's okay for us to substitute.
Yeah, it, that's what, that's what it's for, us to verify that this was, uh, acceptable and, and met the same, uh, end product that we urged.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So, yeah, that's, um, that is all this is about. You guys would like to proceed?
Have they started on any of those yet, like one side? I know there's been some.
No, not, not the intersection yet, we're kind of, we're kind of in a holding pattern, they're done with the, um. I guess with the, uh, the eastern portion of Moore between, uh, West Shreve Drive and West Mayhem, they're cleaning up, and this is going to be next. They're going to do the intersection first before they begin the lanes of the western portion of Moore, because I couldn't do that, they wanted to take. Do half the intersection and the other half deal when they tore up the lane, and that was going to be too long. At least we'll take three or four weeks. So we're going to do the intersection, it's a target.
Haven't there been some other concrete?
And then also magnolia.
Okay, so they use limestone or?
They use one.
When this, I'm just curious to why now it's, uh, we've already like proceeded with concrete roads, now we're like, oh, we should probably do a different subbase now. Because we've had this contention with Matula for twenty-eight thousand, then twenty-five thousand, now it's like, two months later, well, here's a, here's a change order for eight thousand, maybe to cover our costs for the boo-boo that we made early. I, I'm just speculating, but. Curious to why the concrete has already been in place and now we're coming back with a change order for something that's already been done on other roads.
Um, they're just, the change order is just to, just from the intersection alone, to, to cut time. There's nothing.
Shut down time.
Yeah. It's, uh, it's not, hasn't been constructed yet, really.
Now, I don't think any of the, any of the, the roads that we've done yet had a, a four-way intersection, did it? That was down, was going to be down for.
Oh, we have a, we had, uh, magnolia, which is, uh, it's not four-way, it's two, but, um, it's, it's the same. We face the same time challenges, but it's not an intersection such as, um, West Shreve Drive.
So we're talking about a two-week savings for time and.
Yeah.
People's lives being interrupted for two weeks and they'll have to find a different route of travel.
That, that's, yes, that's why, that's why.
Eighty-seven hundred dollars?
Yes.
Um, is Hollycock or Hollyhawk going to be open if they go straight to the intersection, will it be done with the current?
They're, they're, yes, they're, they're going, they're, the eastern section of Moore is going to be opened up while they have this down, so they can either go Hollycock, Jasmine. Around, you know, uh, to go north or that way to go, uh, east, but to go west, they're, they're going to have to go east, Carter. They're not going to be able to use West Shreve Drive.
Aye.
I had two-week inconvenience, there's other routes still that aren't, that aren't substantial. There, there are other routes. Even for emergency services, I don't think we're talking an extreme amount of time. It, it's just, uh, you know, it's just a matter of three, three different routes. It, it's just going to be a nightmare to me, there's just no way we're going to be able to. It's, uh.
Well, what do you mean when you say?
Manage it. As far as, as far as traffic, we're going to post it, of course, we're going to do the best we can, but it's closing down Moore.
But what do we have to manage, though? We don't have to manage that, I mean, you post your signage and people plan accordingly, right? They manage their own routes.
You just saying, you're saying, you're saying multiple cars going down to a dead end and having to turn around.
It, it, it doesn't matter how much you post it, there's going to be people that are not going to read it, or they won't know about it, and then when they come up on it, they're going to be calling and wanting to know why were they not notified?
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, um.
Yeah.
Not saying I don't have to call to do the work, it's just going to be, with that intersection, it's going to be overwhelming.
The big thing is that.
It can be overwhelming for a week, or it can be overwhelming for two and a half weeks.
The real big thing is that the police, fire, and EMS, no. And we let, we, we let them know when they can plan the routes in and out.
So either, either way, council's fine, fine with me, um, I just probably said I was bringing this request.
So this was presented by Matula and Matula, or this was presented by you?
It was, it was by Matula and Matula, they requested this of me.
That's impressive, okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Concerns? Okay, we have a motion to approve.
So the difference in subbases is eighty-six hundred dollars between lime and limestone?
Uh, yes, I can speak to it. There's, uh, in addition to the subbase, there, they would use a higher-strength concrete, so it gains strength in a day or two versus a week. Okay, so. And the flexible base they were putting in, that would take a day versus a line, take four to five days, if they'd fill it down, mix it, let's it, remix it. It's just, it's a lengthy process, the stabilization down, and then they're kind of wait, wait four to seven days for strength.
So I asked Cliff earlier if there was a loss of quality, maybe I should ask also, would this process give us any gain to life on the road?
Uh, what it's going to gain, shutting down the entire intersection and doing all, all at once is going to gain a better, it's going to be a better product. Yeah. Rather than piecemeal it, having joints all at once, you're going to end up with a well better product by doing the whole thing at once. We, we're, we're going to do this regardless, uh, when the confined area, also limestone is going to be much easier to work with and till. And mixing in of that lime in a twenty-five, by twenty-five area. I'm confident they can do it, they're confident they can do it, but it's, uh, it's a quicker screen long way to get the best product possible, I guess.
Can you buy premixed lime stabilized, stabilized base?
You're, you're mixing it with the existing soil, so. Unfortunately.
Resting, you know, we buy it sometimes already premixed.
Yeah, this is just, just straight lining that you can get pretty much anywhere in this place, a certain percentage of the soil, let's set up and remix it all the way later, and then let's up again. So what would you do? I would, if, my recommendation would be definitely to shut it down and, uh, do the whole intersection at once.
But, I'm sorry to interrupt, that's not the, that's not the question, we're shutting the whole thing at once either way, right?
That's right, yes, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know what I would do, honestly, I mean, from an engineer's standpoint, it really makes no difference, um, I'm not the one answering the phone, though, when people are calling, so I can see.
So from an engineering standpoint, we're going to get the same product, it's just going to take longer, because we're doing the whole intersection, right? It is going to be the same quality no matter what.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're looking at a four, four-day wait versus a one-day wait? Right, essentially. Well, goes to a week to two and a half.
That's the, yeah, for the time, there's two layers.
Any further discuss, discussions, questions, or do we have a motion?
I think like, I mean, we did, we did concrete joints in other parts as well, right? I think we're looking at, you know. Audubon Woods.
Did we join magnolia at the end, or was it a one-four?
No, it's a two-four.
Yeah, the each individual lane.
Each one, yeah. But they were, I think in that bigger situation, they were, they were able to, um. Over, you know, I guess, more than the width of one lane to ensure that they got proper coverage with the line. So the, the one lane was narrow, it took a wire section.
You're saying for workability, it's better to go with this limestone for that smaller area, is what you're saying?
It, it's, it's a, it's, it's a time savings, it's, it all is from engineer's standpoint, that the quality is not. I think, I think for the residents of Richwood, I, I think it's going to be better. We can get that section out and get back to normal life, sort of rather than later.
Yeah, because that, that's heavily traveled to a lot of the school traffic, isn't it?
Uh, yes, it is.
You planning on starting this work?
As soon as I get the yay, the go or no go.
I just didn't know if it was going to be whenever school was out for the holidays, or? No.
No, they still have four lanes to do, and probably, um, you work from. Six to eight weeks left to go on Moore, so they're going to keep, they're going to keep going, I imagine construction probably starts somewhere around, at least they. Leave us what I asked for, so I can get public notice out, in the top spot.
Okay, again, do we have any further discussion, or do we have a motion to approve? Where are we at with the budget?
We can assume that we are on the street project. Change order was, first change order was around twenty thousand, on the, on the pipe that buried that, was it, was there? That was drainage stuff, not out of the streets, budget, well, I think it was, uh, obviously in Kenridge? Uh, I don't believe so, it's just in the drainage.
Correct.
So, yes, so we're on, we're on par. For the streets, because there's three aspects to this, the street sidewalks and drainage, the change order that you guys approved, there was a drainage issue on magnolia, so that would be charged to the streets.
You know what our contingency, we'll tell on that is?
Uh, the cost opinion, I think it was probably fif- fifteen percent.
That, 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 that the final one was done at ten percent, because we're more confident and more, more decent there.
Cliff, this is the same pull of money that if in the end of all of our projects, we had an extra, we considered those driveways throughout Richwood that.
That's correct.
It's the same, just the same pull of money, right?
Yeah, it's absolutely correct.
So whenever it comes to serving the public, we have a list of twenty houses repaired driveways or affect, I don't know, probably.
A week and a half of time.
Two, two hundred families per two weeks.
I, I see it as, I think a lot of people have been. Started blocking off lanes there, but in that intersection, it is a very heavy intersection. I don't think a week and a half time makes, this is what, a third of twenty driveways that would be a. Twenty, thirty-year fix, plus I believe there's another one in the table.
We, we go with one, we're setting a precedent, and we're going to have to go.
Yeah.
I mean, here we're paying for people's convenience, right, it's, there's alternate routes. To just provide convenience for a week and a half, that's a real question.
Yeah, it's a good way to put it, that's what it's going to be for.
That's the one I struggle with too, for tax pay, really more comfortable. That's just me and my personal, how I'd like to see the mindset, but I don't know how everyone else.
I mean, and I guess that's where our position. That's for the public, right, and make the best choice. I mean, to me, i- if there wasn't an alternate route, then I'd be like, yeah, let's go. It's just my thoughts.
I think if nothing happens, then.
Yeah, it can, it can, it can, uh, fail for lack of, uh, motion or a second. Time, and if, if there's not a motion, then we will go ahead and, uh, move to the next.
Now, I think, I mean, convenience is one aspect, but then public safety. Curious to see like fire department's perspective. Chief as well, you know, if, if that's closed down, you know, convenience is definitely to save taxpayer money, but then. Can I have an adverse effect on any of our citizens that live that would be impacted by that? Being a convenience. And from my perspective, I don't, I think with Hollycock, Hollyhawk and.
Jasmine.
Both being back open, then we would be okay, now if we still had. Now, if we still had the entire stretch of more there in between with one lane down, but. Pretty much been avoiding more than, it's too hard to make that turn in an engine right now, so.
And y'all, you know, are getting noticed prior to construction anyways, and your emergency response plan will, you know, be effective either way.
We'll definitely need to let CLDMS know and, uh, so they'll be able to avoid it. And might wanna send them a. I know that they're. Uh, we may have, you know, since they are coming out of. Alternate route set up for them if they come in from any other direction.
I could definitely do something like that, ask chief to help me provide that too.
Okay, so. Calling for a motion to approve. Without a motion, the, uh, the subject died as well, the, the. Subject does, so we'll move on to item C. Discuss and consider options regarding bid award for contract six dash twenty twenty. Pump station.
Um, council, we, uh, we also bid opening on the twenty-six for the, uh, fourth and final. Uh, phase of the Northwater Plant Booster Station. Paying an amount of one point nine million dollars, this was four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, over the cost opinions, uh, we had in two thousand eighteen. Um, so Ryan Tinsley and, uh, staff Strand, uh, tried to take some kind of action to figure out. Why they didn't contact several contractors that downloaded information off the SIF cast, uh, on the project. Uh, followed up with as many as they could, um, most of the responses that we got, from what I understand, is that. Uh, contractors that tend to iron and fire, taking on this here, I guess after they saw the, saw the specifications. We did have, we did have three that did state that it was rebid for any reason. That they would submit a bid, um, there's no way to, to. Yeah, you know, um, and we, we also got a response from, from a contractor that we know well. Uh, that was a meeting that did not submit a bid, said if they submitted a bid, it would have been around the same cost. So, you know, discussing this with, uh, with Ryan, I think we're both in the opinion that the. The elevated costs are due to the, the culture of inflation these days, and we're the contractors are trying to anticipate. Rising costs, um, like, might not have risen yet, and this is, this is what we're, we're seeing. Um, the city, the city does not have, uh. You, you do not have to accept this bid, you can go back out for a rebid, if the city wishes to do so. I guess my opinion that in this day and age, I, I believe that the city would ultimately hurt themselves if we did so. Uh, I think like the, um, ground storage tank, we would face somewhat the same situation. Where prices, just, prices are just going to increase as we go on. Um, as of right now, we have a, um, reputable contractor, uh, with excellent reputation. Um, that seems to be presenting a price as to what's going on right now, and, um. Further questions, do I have further questions?
Just, they not understand the materials of construction and all that stuff, they're gonna run into them, uh, saying, well, we're gonna use this and.
No, I don't think that's gonna.
Just gotta ask, just to make sure we cross, cross that box off.
And Ryan was even giving an option, I guess, uh, that there, there is an option to meet. How would you say that, please?
Yeah. So, uh, something that I have done in the past, whenever we've had bids kind of in higher than expected. Is, um, set up a meeting with the contractor prior to, um. Executing the contracts for the project and see if there's anything that while they were pulling their bids together for the project. Is there any potential cost savings that could be considered and could be worked into a deductive change order? Um, you know, if there is something sizable there, of course, we don't want to, uh. End up with a lesser quality product, but if there's something that they could present to us that we could entertain and evaluate. And consider it to be of equal quality, then, um, you know, there could be a potential cost savings there. And that change order could be included in the contract.
Uh, after reviewing everything, I would make the recommendation to award the contract.
If we, um, on the initial cost estimate, because you're saying that it came over four hundred and thirty-one thousand over the, the estimate. On the cost estimate that we originally had compared to the bid that was submitted, have we seen where that delta is? Is it material, is it labor, is it engineering?
So it's a, it's a lump sum bid, um, so they just provided a, a price, one point nine million dollars. And, um, it's not broken out with a bunch of units and, because it's not. Like a water line where you've got so many length or feet of something, every aspect of the project is different. Um, so much of the project is equipment based, you've got pumps and electrical switchgear and generators and transfer switches. You've got many of the different things that are taking a long time to get manufactured and delivered. With all the issues that we're having in the market right now, um, so it's no big surprise that. Include some sort of buffer in their, in their costs to account for all of those potential numbers.
But is it fair to say, can you give us an itemized list of what your one point nine million dollars would take? So I'm sure when you did your cost estimate, you, you factored in equipment, labor.
Yeah, one of the things that we typically do within, you know, it's normally within the first couple of weeks of the, the contract being executed. And bonds and insurance being provided, is that we will request a, a schedule of values. And they'll take that one point nine million and they'll break it down into numbers that they will then be filling against throughout the course of the project. Um, it's not typical that that would be requested before a contract is executed, though.
Now, I guess in this case, I understand where you're coming from, Lord. Regardless, we have no point in comparison, either by line item or by, we don't have lump sum, we just have one, one bid, unfortunately.
Oh, we have a comparison of our cost estimate at the time, right?
Well, yeah, we could, but it was two thousand eighteen to today. Yeah, I mean.
So, this is a firm bid? Or not to exceed the?
Yes.
It's a hard dollar bid, yeah.
Yeah. It's a one point nine million dollar lump sum.
Even if it cost them two point three.
Exactly, right.
Either way.
Yeah, the only thing, what we have in the budget, what's budget for this?
The original. Uh, yeah, the original, uh, budget was, uh.
The four hundred and thirty-one thousand is the difference.
So where's the four hundred and thirty-one thousand coming from?
The, the, the original, yes, the original cost opinion to. Do what this bid was.
We have it in.
Yes, we do, our, our updated cost opinion, I, I thought I included them, if I didn't, I'm sorry. Um, three million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents, that is, uh. It does include, um, a five percent change order allowance for this last contract, just in case we run into an incident or another.
To my point, go from one point nine to one point five, if we're able to find some extra stuff in there that we can take out, but still be the same quality. We could change that one point nine to less, right?
And so I'm sorry, I don't, it wasn't clear to me, this is four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars more than we expected. Right?
Correct.
Where's, where are we gonna get the four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to cover that?
We have the money in the four million dollar budget that was there for the Northwater Plant, it's there, we have. But it's gonna take us right to the edge, and as a result of this, it's possible that we might lose every SCADA option. That we were hoping to get, about sixty thousand dollars in SCADA upgrades, I think I talked with council about that, which were. Force on, force off options here, it's a, all notification options.
So it's basically an intercontingency?
Yeah, the, those options are gone, and now, the only contingency we have now is ninety-five thousand dollars, which is five percent of the odds for changing.
Wait, this is a slump sudden bid, so I shouldn't get worried, right? It's a worst case scenario.
Yeah, because they, they build in their contingency as well, right?
And their bonus.
I mean, in this, in this market, I mean, I do this. You don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are some suppliers out there that will only guarantee their price for twenty-four hours. So, to ask someone to bid on a project that contracts won't be fully executed for eighty-five days. And that you have to guarantee your prices for that amount of time, that's asking a lot, it's the current market.
We believe if we, if rebid was, was there, we'd only make a worse.
Yeah, the, the only reason, I mean.
They only roll in ten thousand.
And there's additional ten thousand.
My institutional knowledge, I mean, what is, what is a ten thousand dollar financial commitment entail? I mean, is that just reapplying, you know, public notices?
That's just for Strand to provide the rebidding services, so to, to go through and get the documents all set up with new dates. Rebid meeting, uh, bid opening, to get a close-up SIF cast. Uh, and to come back, uh, here in front of the council and present the bids that were received. Answering questions throughout the, the course of the bid, issuing any addenda that might be necessary. That's pretty much the extent of the bidding phase.
So you said we'll have about ninety-five thousand contingency at this point, is that right?
That's, that's what's figured in.
Yes, that, uh.
Where do you need to enter this?
So SCADA's not off the table, right? Right, if we run with no change orders and.
It's not completely off the table, but the further we get into the project, the more these costs are going up, a little bit more grants looking, and, um.
What is the possibility of funding that? Something different, is that something we can consider, funding from general?
It could, it could be in the future.
There might be state grants for that, too.
It's just, uh, we're here as of now, you know, it's the year, you're gonna pay a higher cost later. So that's why we're trying to get it in, right, into this, this life space. Eric's been telling us trouble. But again, our, if there are no more questions, our recommendation is to award WW Peyton, the contractor, this station.
We've double checked their insurance and, and those items.
Everything's good to go.
So, any further questions, concerns, or do we have a motion to? Move to, let this move ahead?
Do we need to have it in our motion, if I was to present one with the pre-meeting? And the deductive change orders, do I have to have that in there now, or?
Cause that price would need to come back, right, if, if we go through the pre-meeting process and they.
Right, I would add it in there.
Well, so he's saying what he would do is if we did award the bid, he would meet with them, discuss it. And then bring back any changes with the contract, because y'all have to approve the contract too. We'll bring the contract back to you before it's executed, this is just to accept their bid, not engage in a contract, just to.
I mean, we really don't have any other option, but we, I would prefer.
Your motion is to award or to rebid.
Yeah, that would award it, but I also wanna make sure that we have the ability to have the deductive change orders.
I mean, you could just give that guidance, it doesn't have to be in the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no guarantee that we're gonna be able to get it down, even if we can get it down with fifty.
Yeah, we just start getting thousands of dollars, so.
Now, would the schedule, would the schedule of values be provided before we agree on a contract, that by every contract that I've negotiated?
It can be requested, I don't know that it would be provided, but we can certainly request that they break that out. And then we have our meeting.
Every contract that I've done with a large company, before we, like, we agree upon the schedule of values and the rates. Or any services or material, and then we execute.
We can request that.
Or stick ten thousand over that.
Yeah, but like they said, you know, that could change, we can go up another four, hundred thousand dollars, right? It's like, let's lock it in and report it.
I think before, I like to say before we sign something, to know where we're spending one point nine million dollars, is it? One point five in material and four hundred thousand in bonuses, or is it?
I don't disagree, we should see line item, yeah, I don't think they're gonna show you that, but their bonuses built in, but. Maybe facetious, but.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you, it's good practice, we should leave for you.
But that'll be before we.
You'll have to be the contractor, you'll have to approve it.
I make a motion to award the bid for contract six dash two zero two zero for the Northwater Plant. Booster pump station to.
WW Peyton.
WW Peyton.
Say. Not to exceed.
Not to exceed one point nine million dollars.
Okay, I have a. Seconded by, with the addi- addendum. To exceed by, uh, council member Johnson. Council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am? Council member Yarborough, how? Council member Brown, how do you vote? Let the record reflect that all members voted in the affirmative, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss, consider. And select engineering service provider to complete project implementation for the American Rescue Plan Act. ARP Act, funding administered by the United States Department of Treasury or other federal or state agency.
So, um, everybody knows we're gonna be getting funding from, um, the American Rescue Plan, we've already. Awarded the contract to Grant Works for, um, great management, our next step was to award an engineering firm. A contract for all of the projects that are gonna be funded by the program, program, we received two bids, one from Mercer Engineering, one from Strand Associates. The.
Uh, Mercer or Lynn Lynn?
Lynn Mercer, it's Lynn, Lynn Engineering Mercer, it's Mercer Engineering, all right?
Yeah, they're DBA and.
Strand, of course, got the higher bid, um, or the higher tabulation in my memo. Um, the only change to that is I got the mares scoring a little later, it's not in there, but they still scored higher than Lynn Engineering. So, staff's recommendation is to award the bid to Strand Engineering. Strand Associates, sorry.
Any questions, discussion, concerns?
What is the value of the award?
Do you know how tall the, it's a pers, it's a. Do you, Eric, how tall are the?
I know we received eight hundred and sixty-something thousand from American Rescue Plan, but I don't know what the management.
Twenty, two hundred something thousand?
It goes on a percentage of how tall the. Do you remember what y'all's cost estimate was in the bid?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not included in the.
I don't think that was a scoring.
Yeah, one, yeah.
It would be the, uh, intended loss.
I don't think it was a specification in the bid. Just submit costs, and it's a request for qual, qualifications and not proposal.
We're awarding them a, a contract to manage engineering services.
Right, but when you. On their ability to perform the job. So if we were doing a RFP, a request for proposal, then they would do a proposal for the job specific. And give costs.
They're not bidding for, for value, but. A percentage, I'm just curious to see what that percentage is.
Required for the bid, it's not part of the bid. We just requested their qualifications to do the job.
My, my only concern, I mean, Strand obviously, they're doing a great job, but I remember last time we had some CBGP grants that were denied because we were using one specific firm, I don't know if it's any Strand, it was, can't recall.
Well, that's different, that was, we originally put out a, a bid for a grant. And then we got selected as an alternate, and then we got offered to rebid or reapply for a different grant, the same money, different umbrella. And their qual, their requirement for that bid was to use companies that have no prior knowledge, so they don't get a leg up over other applicants for this grant. So it's, that's not.
Or a grant issue.
Right, so they're saying if we were to use.
I'm just trying to make sure we're not.
This isn't a.
Rabbit-holing ourselves again to always selecting the same other, doing great.
This is money we already allocated, we're not trying to run the money. Yeah, this isn't, that issue is we were trying to qualify for money, we've already. So that's, there's no cost, because we don't have the projects identified yet. Strand probably has them, they're. We need the engineering firm to tell us where to spend it.
Well, it's a fine line, though, I mean, we've got, how long were we stuck with our previous financial audit? Like fifteen years, until I think there is some value to changing it up, but there's also a lot of value in how much.
They're a little different, just 'cause they're.
Well.
Strand has a lot of knowledge in what we need for this.
Oh, yes, some of the other projects.
Whereas an engineering firm would come in and help to start from the ground up on identifying what we need, or use their work and what we previously purchased, but. Um, let me find the, the bid.
We're just picking our consultant, right?
That's.
So the scoring sheet for both bids that we were, were required to use, um, this is provided by Grant Works, we don't come up with this and find it ourselves. Um, we rate them on experience, work performance, and capacity to perform. So with the RFP, there is no. Cost, we, we cannot choose one firm over another, depending on how much it costs.
I make the motion to approve resolution to award Strand Associates the contract.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by council member Mark Brown, seconded by council member Matt Yarborough. Council member Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am? Council member Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And council member Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that all council members voted in the affirmative, the resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. E, discuss and consider awarding twenty twenty-one CBG Walnut Drive water main replacement. HUD number B dash twenty, UC forty-eight zero 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 five. DA number fourteen point two one eight, contract four dash twenty twenty-one to Scho, Schohill Construction Services LLC.
So Council CBG project was, was not the R, this is our standard CBG allocation, we receive it every three years. Um, brought this to council earlier in the year, uh, discussing the project, the water line replacement, we decided on walnut and, uh, cedar. Uh, they're older, that's just concrete lines. Um, we received twelve bids, I think it's twelve bids, on the, on the CBG project, Schohill. In the apparent low bidder, I believe, um, is a hundred and seventeen even. I have a bid alternate in this on your memorandum of, uh, one hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred seventy. The bid alternate that increases it to that price is just for sod instead of seed on the surface ground. Uh, I had that put in there, I'd rather put down sod if we can, so of course we have plenty of money. Our, our budget is two hundred thousand dollars for the CBG allocations, so they're coming in well under that. Basically looked at in detail and. Recommend that you award the contract to Schohill Construction.
Okay, any questions, concerns?
You said it's under budget?
Uh, yes, well, under budget.
Is this a firm bid?
This, uh, yes, it is, with CBG, I believe it has to be, the change order process is, uh. If it's going to change, it has to go through. P levels of. It's a, it's a firm bid. And if something pops up and is unable to, we can't do more work, CBG guidelines only allow us twenty-five percent over the, the base bid price. Um, but we also. Exceed the next lowest bid, or it has to go back, and a lot of red tape pops up. So there's some, uh, chance.
Twenty-five percent.
A motion made by council member Mark Brown, do I have a second?
Uh, not to exceed one hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy dollars?
No, there's, there's a bid alternate.
And, and you also, uh, Mike, but, and consider that we can exceed that, we have a two hundred thousand dollar budget to spend. We have two hundred thousand dollar CBG money, so if we can do more work, we want to.
It's restricted to just.
Yeah, CBG, yeah, they'll manage it, CBGs.
There is no way I can exceed a little bit of budget with this.
Aye.
We have plenty of, plenty of.
Okay, your seconded, Mike?
Second.
Okay. I have a ca, uh, and I have a second by council member Mike Johnson. Council member Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am? Council member Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Royal, Roy Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that all council members did reply and, of the affirmative, the motion carries. Okay, next. Discuss and consider adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash four eighty-two, amended chapter three, article one, section three dash nine of the Code of Ordinances. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So I drafted this amendment to chapter, or section three dash nine, just after the question of the residents that attended the meeting last month, as. Council, um, requested also. The only change in there was to add the ten-minute continuous barking as an qualification for a nuisance animal, or noise, ten minutes.
And replaced excessively.
And replaced excessively, so that's the only change, the only amendment to that section. Um, this isn't firm, this is just what I presented based on the, the last conversation we had.
I, I guess the only struggle that I had with this one is from the police perspective and enforcement, right? Now they have to determine what is ordinary sensitivity, um, to see if people have a reasonable, um, complaint, right? And how do you, how do you expect an officer to come up with that? I mean, it'll be person, person, officer, to officer. Um, the ten minutes is, is great, uh, just 'cause it gives us a number to actually work off of.
Because before it just said excessively, and what is excessive to, and might not be excessive to someone else, so.
Can we take out that ordinary sensitivity, because?
You can. Straight from Queens ordinance, which was the request of the, the previous discussion.
Well, the problem is, is disturbing any person, like, the dog can bark, bark once, and it.
Yeah, same thing with excessive.
Bark and bark twenty minutes, it's not bothering me a bit, you know?
Yeah, so how do we, how do we make this something?
Ten minutes.
That's actually enforceable.
On my thinking, this one.
Is it continuous, or is it ten minutes?
The ordinance, the amendment is continuous. It says continues for more than ten minutes.
Yeah, but if they take it inside for two minutes and then bring it back out, does the ten minutes start?
Recession plot.
Any, I'll say, any of the ordinances that we have can be argued to that level of.
Yeah, I'm just thinking from the police perspective, is how do they wanna manage it?
Right, from the court perspective, is they could show up and the neighbor saying that they've barked for ten minutes, ready to get in and hide it out in court.
One of, one of the things that you have, when, when you're charged with, with, just for example, when you're charged with disorderly conduct. One of the things that they have in one of the requirements is that a, an immediate breach of the peace has occurred. What the police department has to go by. And this, this ordinance actually gives them a, gives them a, a measurement. Something to measure by, and at least can use, utilize their judgment on it. Whereas, the, just like the other, the, the other verbiage in the ordinance, it was, you know, excessive, well. Same thing with immediate breach of peace. That depends on the person, and then again, once you get to that point, uh, once they've done their job and filed. And it comes to court, then they could, you know, that, that goes to the contested docket, or goes to, you know, just pay the fine.
I, I have, I. All of that, because anyone can be a victim. Say, I heard your cat meow from outside, and now the police have to show up and write me a ticket. I, I don't think that's fair at all, I mean, if somebody has a personal vendetta with somebody, they can say, hey, they're being a nuisance, and call the police, and then they have.
That's, that's the same thing with, if, if I was to charge you with, or if I was to call the police on you for, uh, for, say, pushing me like that, that's assault. Or I could pu, or you could push me, but then you call the police, and they come in and they, they, you complain on me, they can take me to jail. It, it's. Well, you know, it's, it's, the bad part about it is, there's a lot of ambiguity in the laws, and I'm not saying that, that that's the, you know, I'm not saying that it's a hundred percent. But I'm saying that this verbiage here does actually give you a little bit more to measure on than even some of the state, uh, statutes, state penal code charges.
So barking, howling, I mean, that's all noise. Would this be something we'd be better off going the route of the level of noise as we do with other disturbance? You know, if it can be measured from your property at X range.
And that would be one mark.
Well, no, I mean, like, you got a decibel rating on it, over, over a period of time, correct?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could do a time weighted average on it as well, but.
What is the exposure?
Yeah, I guess that, that workshop here, as council needs to deem what, or figure out what they deem excessive, because right now it's very vague for anybody to enforce, bark winds or howls excessively. Neighbors excessive to, consultants excessive to mine, like y'all said.
It's, I, it gives our police department now a metric of ten minutes. So if, if citizens call and they're gonna bicker. It's twenty minutes, but if the police have to come out there and they have to sit down and listen and be like, alright, I'm gonna put my timer, it's been eleven minutes, yes, this is excessive. That's why we have a, you know, somebody that's here enforcing the, the piece. Citizens are gonna bicker about whether or not it's ten minutes or excessive, but if we have our officers there that can now have a quantifiable measurement of ten minutes, and they hear it for ten minutes continuously. Then that's, I would think, proof that.
Or if somebody, likewise, you make the complaint, if, if it, it is that caustic to you, you're gonna grab your phone.
Record it for ten minutes.
Record it for ten minutes. Call the cops, say, y'all got it on video, here it is, send email it to us.
And I guess that's where I mean.
We send it to the court.
Handle it in the court.
It's that, they're, they're not even in it.
It would then be up to the state to.
At least it's a. A fix them out.
And if they can't, if the state can't prove their case, which is either to get the witness, if the officer, somebody who can attest to the ten minutes, then it gets dismissed, and it is a burden on the time of the person, yes.
And the court.
Well, that, that's our duty, that's what we're here for, it's just, it's. I get it, I agree, but, but.
Just in loud music or two of the, the hardest.
I think the, the, the issues of this are few and far between, I think right now we're experiencing one issue in the. I haven't heard many more, but.
The gamble of guess on this is it stems from a neighbor dispute outside of the dog. That's where they always.
It's more of a tree, yeah, it's more of a tree issue than a dog.
I did something, trying to fix it right, first down, but then, ten minutes, eighty-five death rolls, yes. It's gonna end up going to.
It's also, you can, they can receive a warning, you know, before, like, it doesn't have to go straight to court, it can be a warning the first.
It's ten minutes, I'm writing them a ticket.
Oh, I mean, there's always, there's always wiggle room, yeah, to be able to do a warning first or something, I don't need. Seems like.
Especially if there's just a personal dispute, and people are trying to get somebody in trouble. Cause a more group, and then have to.
And if, we wanna do, amend, or other changes to it, I mean, we can't, it's. We don't have to adopt it as is, we can make changes and then bring it back, or.
Yeah, thank you. But, but I would take out the ordinary, as others said.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
That's odd wording.
And we want to revisit it at the next council meeting.
We can bring it back to.
We can bring it back amended.
I think that'd work, just make sure that we've got that, that part of it amended, and then.
Creates an offensive odor that most dogs that are outside understand, so.
Or a nuisance animal.
I don't remember if it is now, but it was at one time in the penal code, that was another, that was another, uh, uh. What's the charge?
Disturbing the peace.
Uh, but basically, yes.
Can you change the verbiage now, or do you want?
I can change it now, and then. It's in there.
I can make a motion to adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-two, amended chapter three, article one, section three dash nine of the Code of Ordinances. With the discussed changes.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by council member Mike Johnson, seconded by council member Matt Yarborough. Council member Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am? Council member Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss and consider authorizing the city manager to execute, oh, execute updated contract with BBG Consulting.
Mayor and council, this is, uh, it is directly related to H, uh, the appendix C fee schedule of ordinances. This change is just a. This change is just an amendment to our contract with B B G, which provides our inspection services for pre-building, uh, commercial and residential. And the reason why we need to amend the fee schedule and the, uh, contract is to provide, we're running into, uh, some shortages on these pass-through fees with stormwater, drainage, and flood mitigation items. Uh, these, these are a little more in-depth than just a general planner view, these are retention bases for strip shopping centers for commercial spaces. Uh, requires a little more than just, you know, where your boundaries are and things like that. Um, and it will require the fee schedule be amended to two hundred and fifty dollars per hour, that doesn't mean it's a flat. It is what. Determines, and it's pretty rare to hit. Does not be, need to be absorbed by us if, if you. And you're required to have X amount of drainage, or flood mitigation, or retention bond, uh, we need to make sure that is being, uh, taken care of a- at that time, that's what this cost is for, we need to amend our contract with them to, to, uh, to capture that as well, that's it.
Any questions or concerns? Or motions?
When is this contract? Is there an expiration or no?
Current one?
We have current with B B G.
And this was what we did right after Kenny, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this takes the place of having a building official. I do not have a date on mine. First, do you have the date on it?
I'm looking at the. It doesn't have, it's not a termed contract, it just says that, um, the agreement will be terminable at the will of the city, providing fortified written notice to consult. Come to that fee, this is not a change in any fee, that's just an additional fee.
That's what I was about to ask, if there's any changes in it, like.
It's not like, uh, going from a hundred and fifty to two fifty, it's adding now civil engineering, which we were not charging before, and I think we were absorbing some costs on some of the, um, businesses that we have.
We just ran into this on a commercial lot that we would have eaten that.
Uh, yeah, we have upcoming, um.
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction meetings that are gonna be, starting to be held about storage units and bigger concrete work that we need to.
When will this go into effect immediately, tonight?
You're so fast.
If y'all fast, then.
You're so fast.
The next item, then yes. This is just given Eric the approval to sign.
Alright. I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute up. Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Yarborough, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Mike Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote? Councilmember Matthew Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that all councilmembers, uh, answered in the affirmative, or voted in the affirmative, and the motion carries. Moving on down the line, discuss and consider adoption of ordinance twenty-one dash four eight three, amending.
Reflect the change of the B B G contract, it added the two hundred and fifty dollar hourly rate for civil engineering, and then last week, we received, new costs from Waste Connections, their, um, C P I increased.
Five point two?
Five point two percent, so this is.
I, I do have a question on that, on the pass-through, because they're asking to adjust these rates back to the July billing cycle, and they're asking for that now.
That was a typo.
No, it was typo.
Eric.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
We can bring this back in like January, February, July. So this will be, it'll go into effect upon passage of the rate change, but it'll be for the December billing, which gets paid in January.
Yeah, it'll be billing that closes January eighth, which includes the majority of December, that'll be due.
February tenth, if it's January.
February tenth, yeah, so.
So we get, it's.
We just want to give them, make them know this is possible.
Yes.
So it isn't, yeah.
Alright, so it's just a pass-through now, we aren't going back.
That's correct.
Yeah.
They're going retro.
We increased ours exactly what they increased.
We're not going out the back door without ducking. Make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-three, amending appendix C, E schedule of the code ordinances.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Mike Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Mark Brown. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Melissa Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Matt Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Rory Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Brown, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that all councilmembers voted in the affirmative, motion does carry. Okay, discuss and consider pursuing grant funding for flood mitigation.
Mayor and council, I, I brought this back to you again, um, a- and I apologize for doing this, and we may have jumped the gun here on this, but the flood mitigation project has come back, uh, for, this is, I believe, the fourth time now since twenty seventeen. Um, and the reason why I bring this back to you, I got an email last week from, uh, from T D M, asked if we wanted to continue with our flood mitigation project, it was an alternate, the, we'll refer to it as the floodgate project. Uh, as per our conversation the last time, uh, you said you wanted to go ahead, you know, with the preliminaries, so we did. Uh, we got a deadline of the fourth of this. Specifics on it other than, uh, we have no timeline, we have no, um, L M I in, information on, we have absolutely nothing other than, do you want to go forward? So I said yes. Um, we do know what the match is, the match is two million one hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Our last, when this F U T came under, was it C B G?
C B G umbrella.
Was a one percent match, we're now at a twenty-five percent match. So that two million dollars, we don't know whether that's gonna kick us, how fast we have to get that two million dollars, as soon as I get that information on the, you know, but that's gonna be bond money, we, we know that off the top of our head. What we're running into now is, and Cliff is gonna kick me for saying this, but what we're facing now is, we're, 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 we are going to be about the same time, uh, we, we are going to be having issues with elevated storage. So you're gonna be fighting for these funds, do you fund elevated storage, which is a T C U Q requirement? Or do you want to fund this flood mitigation project? I personally do not believe we're going to get this project. I, I believe our L M I is out, I believe our funding is out, I believe the scope is out, I believe, I don't believe Velasco is gonna approve any of this. I believe there's just a lot of things wrong with this project. Um, that said, uh, my advice to council is we continue forward, let's get the specifics from T D M, maybe the L M I will change, maybe the match will change. Uh, this was complete out of blue to us, we thought it was dead in the water, and now all of a sudden it's back again, so. Um, I apologize for such a short notice, that's what I got from T D M. Uh, and again, I answered yes for the city, uh, no penalty, no harm, no foul, if we need to back out, we just back out, but uh, my advice to council is, or, or, or what I request from council is just continue down the path we're on, and let, let us find out what the specifics are on this plan. Um, that's the project you talked about earlier, where we can't use Strand, and.
Or Grant Works.
Can't use Grant Works, and, uh, we, we have to rebid this whole thing, keeping in mind, these are twenty seventeen numbers. It's going, it's going to be considerably more.
It's a two percent match.
And so our match is gonna be more, so anyways, I, I apologize for jumping the gun, but we, we had to let them know by the fourth. I went ahead and answered yes, because it's. Keeps us in the hunt, and as we find out more, I'll bring it to you, uh, I talked. With this project, I don't believe we meet our L M I, I don't believe we're, the Velasco is gonna go for any of this. You, you can't block water and move water like we're wanting to do, and flood other parts of the city, you just can't do it, so.
I mean, and just, and with the grant administration, we didn't miss any.
I mean, they're blocking the water and moving it our way.
But I think, I, 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 I just, I just don't think we're gonna meet a lot of requirements, but we're, we're in the hunt, and I'd like to stay there for now until we figure out, you know, and, and if things do change, or if. Like, moving some water and better, uh, and, and we'll be in position for that, I don't want to stop the process now until we know more, if that makes sense.
Well, the last time we did rebid this, we couldn't make any changes to our project. Or change what we wanted to do, and then what else.
Uh, uh, obviously, they're having trouble with everybody else.
The new things may allow us to change, if they allow us to get a different project together, or less.
I just don't find it baffling, like, the, where the proposed floodplain storage is gonna be. I mean, correct, if I was wrong, that was all underwater, as it was already, so we're gonna be pumping water on top of water, so it doesn't. It's an imagined call.
Engineers, engineers, spend a lot of time, a lot after year.
So. The moonshot that it goes through, what would that timeline say, they say, hey, yes, y'all are golden, you gotta get three million dollar match? When do you have to have the deadline to put it on the ballot?
Well, the only reason we had to vote on those last bonds is because there was a petition to do.
Yeah.
We can issue bonds without a vote.
Okay.
It's, there was a petition put out with information.
Yeah.
My, my, my guess.
Yeah, you don't want it.
My, my best guess is, is about a year, because you, you're, you're looking at, this is twenty seventeen, and everybody that's in this hunt is from twenty seventeen. Nobody has that scope anymore, partial projects have been done, as in our, as in our case, our bond money was spent on other projects. Because, uh, it's my understanding, part of this bond process was to, to fund this. So, uh, we go from there, but again, I might have jumped the gun, but it's perfect timing anyway, because we needed to discuss this, and I included the old packet, uh, we, we found all of the old information, and I wanted you to have that, uh, as a good baseline. Scope was allowed to be changed, um, this is a great tool to say, look what we did versus what we had planned to do, so it's a good, uh, good data point. That's it, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
So no action?
No action. Okay, let's take about a five, ten minute break before we go into executive session, I think Trish will take some pictures. Of course, I'm wearing my ugly shirt.
You need to do your hair.
At least I got my hair.
Hey, hey, Trish, alternate date for the folks that wanted to retake anyway?
For the group?
Yeah.
We're good, let's take the picture.
I, yeah, I mean, we can do it next.
Hardcore that way? He's rolling with it.
She can, she can Photoshop your hair if you want. I can take off your badges. Mark, I can take off your badges and the picture. I can take these things off. Oh, you have two.